All right, I'd like to call to order the June 10th, 2024 Mallick Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista?
Here.
Vice Chair Harrison?
Here.
Commissioner Stenson?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Betcher?
Present.
Commissioner Landis?
Here.
All right, moving on to item number three, approval of the May 28th, 2024 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? Not hearing or seeing any with our in-person commissioners. How about online? Any changes or corrections? Not seeing any indication, so we'll go ahead and clear those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Let the record show, there is no public here tonight for public comment. Is there anybody who has signed up in advance to do public comment for online?
No one has signed up to do public comment online.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, review and discussion of the draft middle housing ordinance.
Good evening, Chair Batista, Vice Chair Harrison, members of the Planning Commission, Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner. I'm joined today with Ben Han, Senior Associate at Burke Consulting, and Fredus Oneza, Associate Principal at Burke Consulting. So we're here today to follow up on our previous conversation on the draft middle housing ordinance and to bring to you today some updates. So the purpose of today is to review code recommendations for middle housing, and then we'll introduce a policy worksheet, which is an activity that we'll be asking Planning Commission to provide input on and for review at a later meeting. Today's agenda is a project schedule overview, then we have some key topics that are part of the code review process for the update to the middle housing ordinance, and then again, the policy worksheet introduction. So I think from here, I'll pass it on to Ben.
Awesome. Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, everybody. It's great to be back again, speaking with you all today on the draft middle housing ordinance. I just want to again reiterate where we are with our schedule. We are looking towards submitting a draft middle housing ordinance for the city of Mallick Terrace this week to meet a deadline set by Department of Commerce. I just want to reiterate that we will not be making any decisions, any final decisions today once an ordinance, but rather using this as a work session to talk about some of the key topics in ordinance. Just want to flag as well that in July, Department of Commerce is providing updated guidance on middle housing, and so that will take into consideration as we review and edit the draft ordinance over the next few weeks and months. So with that, next slide, please. Again, I think just as we go through each of the topics associated with the draft middle housing ordinance, I just want to reiterate what our approach has been. With HB 1110 as in the past, I think what's most critical is that really thinking through how middle housing can have the same chance as a single-family housing within the city. And so with regards to approach, we have to ensure that middle housing topologies do not have any more constraints than a single-family house could have. In a way, it's kind of splitting the pie in half. With regards also with the light rail station coming on board this summer, it's a really unique opportunity for a city of Mallick Terrace to think through, how do we prioritize land uses and housing that supports this new development within the city's history? And finally, as we think about with the comp plan update, how do we ensure that there's the greatest design flexibility to support the comp plan's vision for the next 20 years as well? This is a longstanding, this is a list of topics that we'll be covering today. So we'll, how we'll do this is we'll go through each of these topics, I'll pause for discussion, and then we'll move on to the next topic, and hopefully that'll take us through the hour that we have with you all today. And so you've all seen this last time I presented, but we'll go through what already allowed housing topologies within middle housing. We'll have a robust discussion around unit density and what residential densities can look like within the city, talking about dimensional standards, thinking about how to ensure, thinking about how lots are, are massive, it's like on lots, some design considerations, infrastructure standards, and off-street parking. And so with that, we'll get started with our discussion. The current, when thinking about allowed middle housing topologies, for a tier-three city like Mallick Terrace, there really isn't a minimum or maximum number of topologies that the city of Mallick Terrace can adopt. However, just knowing for the purposes of discussion, even though under Commerce guidelines, Mallick Terrace is considered a tier-three city or a city with a population less than 25,000 people, it, the projected population of the cities will all exceed 25,000 in the foreseeable future. And so in our approach, we've trying to think ahead of the population to come, rather than the population exists now. And so for, for, so I'll be using the word "tier-two" city frequently throughout this meeting. It just means for cities with a population more than 25,000 people. And Commerce recommends that for such cities to adopt at least six of the nine topologies. For now, initially, we thought we might as well aim for the stars and see where we land. And so with regards to what we're thinking about for typologies to prioritize within the city, we are recommending that the city adopts all nine typologies. And so with that, I just wanted to pause and check in to see, get some initial feedback around what types of housing we should focus on, or if there's any clarifying questions I could answer around how are these different typologies defined as well?
I honestly don't understand typologies, like why we're differentiating them. We already basically allow lopsided duplexes everywhere in the form of ADUs. This seems like an unnecessary complication. It seems like you can just set the number of units on a lot and then let the design flexi, like the design flexibility is there. Is this a state requirement, or?
Yeah, anything I bolded is a nice visual reminder to me that it is required. Actually, fun fact, in the code, a lot of these topologies were not explicitly spelled out as, as an allowed use on a residential, single-family lot. And so to me, it was really, I think that's where, I guess from a practical perspective, where this comes into play, where we're saying, yes, we allow duplexes. There wasn't any code around the allowance of triplexes or fourplexes, along with five and sixplexes as well. And so this is a nice way to think about when looking through Title 19, through the code of like, yeah, for allowed uses residential, residential, single-family, this will come into play nicely.
Okay, so if we didn't want to define all these, if we wanted to say build, you know, this many units per lot, we could have this as a reference, but it's not like we need to go through and like have a bullet point for each of these in the code or something like that.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean Commerce already removed guidelines around, there was originally guidance around cottage housing to be four units or more, but Commerce already took that language out. And so there's a lot of flexibility, just more, I hate using the word aesthetic, but in terms of like, kind of the, how, how thing development is masked out on a lot.
Just a point about our current code. So right now, we allow duplexes in RS 8400. And that's the only single-family residential zone where that typology is, that housing type is allowed. Triplexes, fourplexes, fiveplexes, that would fit more in our definition of multifamily housing, which is not currently allowed in single-family zones.
I'd also say there's certain standards in our code around design that don't necessarily allow some of these typologies to be built, depending, just due to door placement and other things. And I think we always want to keep in mind as we're going through the comp plan that it's not one size fits all, that we're trying to have denser development around, you know, multimodal opportunities and around the light rail station. So something to keep in mind that we may want to distinguish where some things can go and where other things can't go. Obviously, ADUs and duplexes and other things like that are going to be outright allowed in any of the, the zones. But, you know, I think just of kind of, when you're putting it all together for street, adequate streets, water, sewer, all the capital, planning and such, then it really starts to affect typology and, and locations as well.
You must have been reading my mind because that was exactly going to be my question because from, you know, on the previous slide where you talked about, you know, must be allowed, where single-family is, is currently allowed. I, I thought there was, like within a, you know, within a certain distance of frequent transit. I thought that was one of the conditions of this.
That's with regards to density, unit density. And so there are two key parts of the ordinance that we'll be talking about. One is if you're within a quarter mile of a major train stop, which is the light rail station, the, the minimum unit density is four units per lot. So on a lot that's within a quarter mile of the light rail station, you can either build a single-family house or four units, or four, such as a fourplex, cottage housing development, townhomes. And so it's really trying to prioritize higher densities where it makes sense, where, where there's, there's less car dependency available. There's also another consideration we'll be talking about today around off-street parking within a light rail station. I'll be the first to say, I think, the unique challenge with this is the light rail station situated next to I-5. And so a quarter-mile buffer doesn't really impact a lot of parcels, but I think realistically thinking about what's a practical commute to the light rail station, that's something worth discussing further, I would argue.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would definitely agree then that we would need to distinguish some of these typologies and, and where they go because it's, I mean, you know, off, off of like 236 or 44th, yeah, I could see, you know, a sixplex or, you know, even ideally more mixed use there. I think we're selling our shelves short if we just do a sixplex. But, you know, a half-mile off the arterial, I have a hard time, you know, seeing like a sixplex going into a, you know, an area that is that far removed, you know, from our, from an arterial, from frequent transit, you know, the, the additional parking constraints that you're going to be putting in, you know, on, on that neighborhood. It's, yeah. So definitely some, some clarifications and some restrictions on some of those.
Yeah, and like Ben said, we'll, we'll discuss parking as we go along too. So there's a lot of considerations as we kind of move through this and think through this. So, you know, just kind of think comp plan with middle housing and then ultimately implementation, right? How we get there with zoning after we make some of these key decisions.
And just wanted to double-check since we got a couple of online people tonight. Do any of our online commissioners have any questions before we move on?
No, but I like the questions that were asked. It gave me more information, so thank you.
All right. I think we're ready for the next slide.
Next topic. All right, so this one is around, again, thinking about unit densities within the city of Mallick Terrace. Currently, the code looks at either residential, single-family zoning versus a residential, multi-family zoning. The, the recommendations around unit density will primarily impact residential, single-family zones within a city of Mallick Terrace. And so the recommendation that we're proposing to the city is that the city adopts a permitted unit density of two units per lot, which means when you have a lot on like an RS 4800, you can either put in a single-family home or a middle housing topology that has at least two units on it. This number will increase to four, as you mentioned, as we talk about being within a quarter mile of the light rail station. And finally, some additional considerations around affordable housing. And so if there's a developer who wants to build four units on a lot, if one of them, could build four units on a lot if one of them was deemed affordable for, affordable, affordable housing, which is defined by Commerce as if you're owning, it means you have an area, an area median income of 80% or less, or if you're renting, that number drops down to 60.
Just the unit density for the four units. That's just assuming we adopt the tier-two criteria and we move forward with that quarter-mile of the light rail. That's not to say we have to go with this. This is just a recommendation that we're providing to you.
At a minimum with ordinance, though, the two units per lot is a requirement from Commerce.
Thanks. I have two questions about this, and one of them probably applies to later sections. So the typical plat in like old Mallick Terrace is about 60 feet by 120 feet, which is 7,200 square feet, or about a fifth of an acre or so. Are we looking at allowing smaller lot sizes and how does that play into this? To me, it seems that like, I don't, I don't think people, I don't think cities in this region zone this way, but like, like units per acre almost seems more appropriate if you're looking at changing the unit, like the lot sizes. But I think based on historic zoning patterns, I would guess we don't have many lot sizes smaller than about 7,200 square feet, but we might be looking at that in the future, perhaps?
Yeah, I would say units per acre has often been a typical form of measurement when looking at residential density. And element like I, this one took me a little bit of time to learn myself, but mine, but it's clear that there's an emphasis on the number of units rather regardless of lot size. And so hence why with our approach, we want to make sure that there's a lot of flexibility around design and thinking about space, but also fitting within the existing urban design of Mallick Terrace as well.
Yeah, I think that aligns well with other things that are in our code currently, but I could see us adopting some kind of smaller lot size in the future for some areas of the city. So we'd have to keep an eye on how this aligns with that in the future. Also, I just want to be on record that I think within one quarter-mile of the light rail station, we'd be, you should be having more than four units per acre or per, per lot. But, you know, we get to that when it comes.
And a lot of what's a quarter-mile is actually town center, so there's some parcels that are within the existing single-family zones.
Do we have to rezone the golf course? Actual question.
I don't believe so, no. So we have to look at, I mean, your, your question on our minimum lot sizes, yeah. I think we have very large lot sizes compared to, you know, most other jurisdictions. We do have 4,800 zone, and we do have properties that have been redeveloped. And of course, anything that has like townhome or other things have been divided into a lot, smaller lots through what's called a fee simple subdivision process. So, but I think what exists now and with this comp plan update, we'll, we'll be seeing a lot of changes because we have to kind of rethink our whole approach to zoning and placement and how we're doing things. So a lot of things to consider.
I would add too, there's, there's an asterisk with unit density, just indicating that if there's a development that subdivides a lot before below 1,000 square foot, that the two units per lot provision does not apply as well.
Is that a state requirement, or is that a recommendation?
State requirement. So if you have lot, like, yeah, houses on 1,000 square foot lots, then you can just build a single-family. And I would imagine from adult perspective, it would be hard to pencil out financially a duplex on a thousand-square-foot lot.
I think you'd probably do like a townhouse with an ADU on the bottom. I would guess that the way that, you know, shadier cities might get around this is they would double the minimum lot size to 14,000 whatever square feet, and then you would have the same density. So it's, I don't know, it's a weird game to play when you do these things by lot instead of just by units per acre, I think.
Any other questions around unit density or any clarifying questions I may answer on the topic?
No, I think we're good for now.
Thank you. All right, next we'll be diving into development standards, and so again, thinking about design flexibility. We're just primarily covering topics that Commerce has went through through their ordinance guidance. And so I'll cover these two topics collectively as I think they impact each other. The first is around floor area ratio. Currently, their only floor area ratio recommendation in the code currently is for RS 4800 zoning designation. And Commerce does provide some additional guidance around increasing that FAR ratio as there's more units being built. However, we're recommending that we just remove FAR requirements altogether and focus more, pivot more towards thinking about maximum lot coverage or thinking about how much of a lot can be where building can stand. And so, and I think directly where we stand right now is that for lots, if you're building three units or less, you can cover a lot to 45%. For lots with four, four or five units, half of the lot, and for lots with more than six units on them, 55%. This is, I believe, if I'm correctly, not a significant pivot from what, the biggest significance that will be changing in the code is, is the, is the density bonus of, of maximum lot coverage. Just understanding that more units requires more space, therefore, we should build more, more on the lot.
All right, actually, I got a question. I know that there, there was a little bit of discussion or question at one of the CPAG meetings that I was able to attend, but it's also a question that's, you know, kind of come up in the past when it comes to height.
Height, yeah.
So height is going to play a lot into this, you know, if you're, if you're really going to be focusing on maximum lot coverage and the lots are going to be smaller, to get the density that you're looking for, you're going to have to go up. So is, is reexamining what height is allowed where? Is that going to be part of this process as well?
Yeah, so it's not in our presentation, oh, it is on the next slide. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, don't mean to jump ahead.
No, but I'll just go ahead and spoil the next slide is that currently in the code it says up to three stories, but we're recommending a change to 35 feet altogether. We are not also making any, there are additional building height bonuses that are allowed, I think, in some of the, the transit zones and the, yes, the transit zones. And so we're not making any, we're not recommending to reduce those bonuses. I think that's a great idea. And so, so rather than say up to three stories, having, providing more clarity on what building height looks like, and Commerce recommends 35 feet. Yes.
I think other than RS 4,800, we are currently at 35 feet, right?
That's correct, yes. So code reads 35 feet or up to three stories right now.
Good job, us. So I do have a couple of comments on this general stuff. I think, you know, our FAR already at 40% lot coverage in three stories is 1.2, which is pretty good. I know we'll have to increase the lot coverage, but when I start seeing lot coverage above 50%, especially with the, with impervious surface ratio, I start getting worried about stormwater runoff and things like that. So I think we would need to look at what that looks like for environmental mitigation measures. And just kind of as a preference, I would almost rather see taller buildings rather than buildings that take up more of the lot for that reason. But I think there are some design methods that can be used to, when you start getting above 50% of the lot, looking at things like impervious surface ratio. So I'd like to see that as part of our design recommendations. The other part that I think might be helpful to include in the code, the comments I've been hearing from the public on new development is, I don't want a bunch of tall windows looking over my yard. And I think there's some validity to that, regardless of what people, you know, the, you know, people might disagree with it. But I think if you go around and look at, you look at some of the newer developments and townhouses or apartment buildings where they start taking up a large percentage of the lot, they're basically, you know, I don't know if this is like a good way to phrase it, but outward oriented rather than inward oriented. So the windows are all giant and they're all facing the lot. You can see this at the townhome development on 56th, north of 228th. And then where you can see it on 55th, between 240th and 242nd, the newer townhouses that are going up there are spaced about 10 feet apart on the lot line. And it just doesn't make very good design. And if I had a critique of all these developments, it's that they don't really use their site very well. So I'd like to see a couple of design standards included in this. One is sort of like open area, like minimum dimensions, so that you have, you know, like, you know, chopping up the lot into all these, what are called beer, what I've heard called beer can spaces, where it's like kind of a useless place where you just like throw beer cans in there and nobody really pays attention, and nobody notices because nobody uses it. And then the other thing I think would be helpful is in the building code, from like zero feet to 15 feet, they've got like limitations on glazing area. The residential code, you know, has that from zero to three feet and three to five feet, basically. But I think looking at glazing area limitations from like zero to 15 feet would be a tool that would help designers reduce the tendency to like put their giant glass walls five feet from the property line of the adjacent property, while also encouraging them to orient their, their buildings a little bit more inward to the lot rather than sort of facing outward. It's a bit of a tricky thing that I don't think I, there, we might be, I may be inventing some code here, which would be harder, but I think it's important that we get right because I think the quality of the development that I've seen is pretty variable. Some of them are pretty good. Some of them could use some improvement. And so I think if we can capture that in this middle missing, missing middle housing requirement, then it can also, you know, inform future zoning requirements you might make as we come from the comp plan and start incorporating some more of these things.
Actually, I had a follow-up, I had a question in response to your, to your comment. A lot of the, the code require, oh, in this case, a lot of these are more recommendations from Commerce more than requirement. But, you know, we don't, I think the primary space where there are additional recommendations on are on the building facade and the entryway for the space. And so, you know, I think the recommendation from Commerce, which I'm not, which I actually did not recommend for the code update for Mallick Terrace, but is about a 15% window space for, for facade. And so.
Is that floor by floor, or is that overall?
I think it's the overall building facade, a minimum of 15%. And so I guess my question is like, are there, in terms of like building orientation and like thinking about building facades though, like are there any like recommendations that you, yourself and the other commissioners like to see in terms of like new middle housing development in terms of like?
Well, as a, you know, somebody who probably is not a licensed planner or anything, I think the, what is it, the town, the cottage housing development that, whose name I can't remember, that's east of 48th, south of 236, that was just developed. Like, I think, you know, the overall common area dimensions could be improved, but like I think the fact that they've got, like the windows aren't necessarily looking down directly into each other or into the neighboring property, but I think they're sort of oriented more towards these common spaces. So there's more of a logical progression of like private to public space that makes better use of the site. So I know that's a hard thing to write into law, but I would imagine that, you know, open area requirements for glazing in proximity to adjacent private property would be one factor. I've seen privacy studies submitted before, which, you know, mixed feelings about requiring something that detailed. I think, you know, limiting glazing within certain heights of the floor, so you can still have like clear story windows, you know, within a certain distance of the property line, but then like, you know, your big windows sort of have to face away from it. I think that's something that would, and I'd like to see it vetted by a few, you know, designers or developers who would probably have thoughts on that and what it makes for practical buildings, but I think that's sort of the direction I'd like to see it go.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to check in, making sure of keeping us on time. Are there any other comments around recommendations to floor ratio or maximum building coverage, or maximum lot coverage, excuse me?
Just to follow up on a comment that Commissioner Betcher had made, you know, in the past, we've talked about this issue of, you know, the more dense these neighborhoods become and the less open space there is, the more problematic it becomes, especially when it comes to trying to preserve our tree canopy. So I think, you know, we've made these comments in the past, and so I'll echo them again tonight, you know, the, the idea of having setbacks or, you know, really being strategic about where this open space is being planned so it can be maximized to the greatest extent possible, especially that would allow. would allow vegetation and tree growth on the private property as well. Because I've made comments in the past that, you know, the way we're going, our street trees are going to be our only tree canopy because the trees just aren't going to be able to grow on private property. And that's, that's not how it should be. So it'd be, it'd be nice if we can build that in somehow where it says, okay, yeah, we're, we're, you know, we're sacrificing the, you know, lot coverage. We're going to allow you to go up, but because we're doing that, you're also going to have to be set back so far or if it's a larger development, be strategic in where you place each individual lot's open space so they could be aggregated together as more like a mini greenbelt or, you know, something that would really promote, you know, healthy tree growth and, and, and open space. So it's just, yeah. We talked about it before. We're talking about it tonight. So just want to make sure that that gets thrown in there.
Yeah. That is a comment statewide of a huge concern is thinking about tree canopy growth in general as well. I guess we can move on to the next slide. Awesome. Again, mentioned earlier, next slide, I was talking about building heights. I think just clarifying the language around the height, these are the recommendations from Commerce around minimum setbacks around a lot. The main recommendation that we're proposing currently is to align with what Commerce has and for the most, for, excuse me, around setback requirements in the municipal code, the only change that will be needed to align with what's in Commerce currently is to reduce the side setbacks to five feet for middle housing.
This is pretty much in our code now, right?
Yeah. Actually, I'll let John test it. That's our issue.
There you go. Yeah. So right now it's five feet unless you're in a corner where we allow ten feet side yard.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't seem like much of a change. Two comments. I think I would, I would like to see, you know, I think the rear yard, if you're trying to make like a, you know, development where the block is like, you know, functions as a courtyard sort of with like gardens in the middle of the block. I think the rear yard is way more important than the side or the front yard. Side yards tend to be like beer can spaces and I'm not totally sure like where the five foot number comes from. I see some like reason for like limiting, like, you know, you have to like maintain the side of the building or something. But like, you know, if you're not building a bunch of windows facing over your neighbor, like I think people might actually prefer like a big blank wall that, you know, is a little bit more private rather than something that's like five feet away and has a bunch of windows in it. So, you know, if there's room to like reduce even the front or side yard setbacks and, you know, other people might disagree on this. But in order to give more design flexibility, I think that's something we should be looking into. And I think for side, for front yard setbacks, it'll probably depend on the street. But a lot of visual studies I've seen, like kind of like the smaller streets with like the buildings that are a little bit closer, sometimes they're a bit more, you know, desirable. And so it gives like a cuter scale to the street. So I think looking at things, things to maximize design flexibility, also the streetscape would be helpful.
I think I'd have some concern about reducing the side setbacks too much. Partly, I'd, I'd kind of want fires take on that for safety. I remember back when they were still called air condos, when, you know, these townhomes first started being developed around here, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. I know the various fire departments had a cow. They really didn't like them, especially the ones that were in unincorporated areas. I would definitely, you know, regardless of whether the setbacks are reduced from five feet or not, I think it'd be important to have some sort of screening element, especially for those lower floors. It'll be tough, you know, depending on access to sunlight, how well like are reviades or something planted in there that you typically see for, you know, vegetative screening, how well it would be able to grow, you know, in those confined spaces. But, you know, something like that, you know, would be nice. My question is that when it comes to the individual story heights for residential or townhome, for each story, is that, is that like a nine foot per story right now? Or is it just very, I'm just, I'm asking because, you know, I see your recommendation is thirty-five feet. Well, what does thirty-five feet actually get you? How many floors are we talking about? Is that, is that three floors plus a, you know, unusable attic space that's just basically for heat ventilation? Or can you squeeze four floors in there? Is this thirty-five stories to the top of the roof? Or are we doing that calculation where it kind of splits the, you know, the roof in half? So, you know, there's, there's wiggle room. It's just, I know thirty-five just on its sound, sounds very simple and easy to comprehend. But when you actually break it down, what is that actually getting you?
Do you like the answer?
Three stories.
Three stories.
And it's, roof line is typically measured to the middle of the roof pitch. What you see here in townhomes is typically thirty-five feet. A lot of them are supplying open space with rooftop type terrace that's usable as, as living space. There are minimum requirements for fire accessibility. Also, if you, it's difficult, Commissioner Betcher, to not put windows on one side of a building, particularly where you're going to see a lot of these units are going to be connected. So you have to have minimum setback from the property line for fire access to get around a building. And also, if bedrooms are on the back, then you have to have ingress egress for people to get in and out of things safely. So some of these things are not just like, oh, somebody thought five feet. Oh, somebody thought ten feet. A lot of these are versed in fire and building codes as to some minimums. It doesn't mean like certain things can't be altered. But when we're talking about people living in a structure, there's certain hard and fast rules that, you know, we have to take into consideration of where that is. So just FYI as we kind of look over some of those requirements.
Quick hypothetical, you know, when it comes to, you know, the three, three stories mid, you know, mid roof, probably assuming a standard pitch. Say somebody wanted to go with like a mansard roof and actually make the roof area that fourth floor kind of actual interior livable attic space, would that, would that be allowed?
We have some of that in the city right now.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not covered roofing typically, but there are some things that have been built as, as such. But typically thirty-five feet's three stories.
Okay. And the reason why I ask this is just like you can, there's only so many units you can, you know, fit in, in three stories. You know, what I think of is you probably have your primary residence is going to take up two stories and then probably an ADU on the ground, you know, maybe on the ground floor, but you're also probably sharing space with a garage. So you're not getting really two full units in that space. But, you know, if it was actually four, four stories, then you might be able to get two full units. But it also provides, I guess, diversity of housing as well, just.
Yeah. And I also think we need to look beyond what we've developed here in the cities because when we're talking about the other housing typologies, people are going to be living on floors potentially. It's going to be condominiumized. So there's going to be different living arrangements than what we typically think of, right? So there could be a variation of what people ultimately are going to construct in the years to come that are a little bit different than what we've seen.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Not hearing or seeing any? Double checking online?
No question, but I'm glad we brought up the fire thing because that's what I was thinking about when we were talking about five feet setbacks on the side is how safe that is to be so close to each other. So thanks. I'm glad that we brought that up as a good discussion. Thank you very much.
Move on to our next section on design standards. Currently, the section here only covers the design standards that are required from Commerce for cities to adopt if they choose to allow cottage housing and courtyard apartments as a allowed housing typology. But for both typologies, their requirement is centered around open space. And so Commerce recommends that there's a minimum of twenty percent of the lot size be dedicated for an open space. This does not include the driveway for development. It's more focused on an open grass field, a general private open space, the setbacks themselves, critical areas if there are any on the lot. And so really just kind of understanding that cottage housing is centered around open space. And so allowing that there's enough of that yard space available. And for courtyard apartments, their recommendation is to ensure that there is an open space and that open space is actually bordered by the dwelling units of the courtyard apartments themselves at a minimum of two or three sites. And I'll say next section does cover physical standards, physical standards and landscaping. We're not proposing any changes because the city actually goes above and beyond what Commerce recommends.
I think I would say here real quick is that we don't have a lot of cottage housing in the city right now. Can only think of maybe two developments since we enacted the code. And I was around when we enacted the code, so I know what the intention of that code was. And the intention is not what we've been getting. I've, when I, and, you know, the commissioners may differ on this, but when I think of cottage housing, I think of smaller scale development. Kind of think of, think of that, you know, like nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties LA style, you know, small boxes or whatever shape you want to talk at, you know, around a courtyard, similar to like a courtyard apartment, not individual units that are twenty-five hundred square feet and aren't really centered around a courtyard, but are more linear, but are just using the term cottage housing so they can get away with doing what they wanted to do with their, with their development. So if this, you know, if, if, if what's going to be recommended of passing is going to be to definitely put that qualifier in when we're talking about scale of these and how it's designed, then I am, I'm definitely for it. If it's not in there right now, I'd like to see something like that added because I think that's what our intent was when we originally passed the code. I think that's what I think of when I think of cottage housing. It's what I think of when I think of courtyard apartments, especially more, you know, we, Seattle has a few of those, you know, there's some in the U District, some in Capitol Hill. You know, they, they really blend in well with the neighborhood, but have high density. It's like, but it's because it's done thoughtfully. And I think that that's an important component to have. I think that we think of cottage housing or like, oh, there's really only a few lots in the city that where this could work right now. But if done right and the, and the right definitions are in place, it wouldn't take that many lots to be aggregated to provide that, you know? Maybe you only have to aggregate two lots and you can get six nice little cottage houses out of it. Because I think when we talk about cottage housing, that is probably, that besides an ADU is going to be the closest thing we're going to get to actual affordability, not a twenty-five hundred square foot essential single family home that's going to sell for nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I, I think there's a justification to say, no, we want, we purposely want these to be a smaller scale because that also plays into our density and affordability aspect. But we're still having that open space. And that's usually been the biggest concern with even tonight's discussion, you know, we're talking about open space. So.
Um, sorry. Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm, sorry. I know there is a section in the code on cottage housing specifically. And I think part of our view of that code is we'll be making recommendations to help to address that very concern that was raised. And so I think there's a lot of, excuse me, I'm questioning on minimum lot sizes and administrative processes that are unique to cottage housing as well. And so part of this process will be exploring potential changes to that. I'm going to ask, we pivot to the next slide as I grab a second of water.
Okay.
Yeah. I was going to add that there are some industry standards in terms of cottage housing. So when we talk about cottage housing, it's not going to be your standard single family big homes. So there are certain limitations of the size of the home that we can look into.
And I would say it's also in our horizon where our existing cottage housing code definitely needs to be updated. So I think this is looking at what's going to be required in terms of middle housing, but taking this and moving forward with a actual development update to that code section.
Thank you. We'll move to the next slide. Just, I'm just keeping an eye on the clock because I want to get to the next section. But again, we're not proposing any changes to vehicle or access or landscaping as the city's code already meets Commerce's requirements. Actually, the city's code is more stringent than Commerce's recommendations. And so in terms of ensuring that like driveway spaces are minimized and more space for sidewalks to prevent vehicle or pedestrian intersection spaces. And so at this time, I am not proposing any changes to vehicle access or landscaping. And so with that, I'll move us to our final topic, which is off-street parking. And so Commerce recommends the following, requires, excuse me, requires the following for off-street parking. For all lots, if you're a lot that is within a half mile walking distance of a major trans stop or liberal station, the recommendation is that the city does not require any off-street parking spaces. Actually, before I continue, I just want to step back and say, with all these off-street parking spaces, it's not a must. It's, it's, it's an allotment from the city. And so a developer could come in and, actually, sorry, this part always throws me off a little bit because it's, I always love, I can spend a long time talking about this topic. But essentially, for a lot less than six thousand square foot, the maximum recommendation that the city can make is one off-street parking space per unit. This does not include a developer coming in and proposing a development with, with more than the one. But I think, and for lots greater than six thousand square foot, that number becomes two. And the premise behind this, this requirement isn't necessarily, it is really more centered around thinking about prioritizing housing rather than the parking space. And I think, excuse me, when thinking about, let me click my thought for a second. Vanessa, would you mind speaking more?
I could, I could add to that, that this regulation is talking about the differentiation between six thousand square feet or smaller and then the larger lot. So when it's smaller, six thousand or smaller, then you have a middle housing, for example, you have a duplex, then the requirement is that per unit, you are allowed to require one parking. So, so just think about the wording allowed is, is in the, in the Commerce's guidelines. So it doesn't mean that you have to have the maximum cap or minimum. So it's like you are allowed, I mean, city cannot allow more than one. But like what Ben was saying, that developer could come in and put more parking. But the idea behind is that you want to minimize your car and living space. And it's a smaller unit in a, in a duplex or fourplex or triplex. So you want to maximize or make your efficient use of the, of the land. I hope that makes sense. And Ben, if you want to add?
No, I think that's great. Thank you.
Oh, so thinking about this, and I know this is something that a lot of other municipalities have been moving towards. The, the thing that sort of comes up in my head is there's a question of accessibility. By not requiring a parking spot, it may be limiting who can actually utilize the, you know, it limits who can actually take that, that space. Person who has to, you know, who needs a car to actually move around is effectively either more inconvenienced or basically won't be, you know, won't have the benefit of living in, in those areas. And, or people who, you know, because, you know, commuting time is time that you're not paid for. So unless you live or work, I'm sorry, unless you work in a place that the transit center goes close to or has very good transit options, you're, you're pretty much limited to, you have to use a car.
Yeah.
And thinking about it, I imagine that most developers are not going, I mean, if they're, if they have the option of not putting a parking space and adding more space to the, the unit, or adding more units, they're probably going to go with more units because that's what's going to make more money.
You?
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm just, I'm just voicing my, my sort of thoughts with.
No, that's, that's a really excellent point. And I would say with other jurisdictions I've worked with and I've met with a few developers, this is probably the most controversial topic we've had with them for obvious reasons, knowing, I think what's actually what I appreciate about speaking with them is they come out from a marketing perspective as well. And so we, And so we, we think about the need, the housing need, but they think about selling the unit. And so from their perspective, like this has been, there's been a lot of back and forth around what, what the implications of this work. And like to your point too, like, I think one thing that's not talked about with this ordinance is the impact it will have on on-street parking, on-street parking as well. And so this could have some potential implications on curb space management in general. I'll add too that there are clauses where, that there could be like an empirical parking study to be done, but it would have to prove that, that the street is unsafe. For example, if the street doesn't have a sidewalk, and so cars applied to parking on the gravel pit next to the house, and that's a space where it intersects with people walking and biking, and so which could cause pedestrian safety issues.
Thank you. And I, I do recognize it is a very controversial, you know, wherever the topic of cars comes up, it's, it's.
Yeah, always.
I think it's a, you know, fair point about inaccessibility and, you know, people with different abilities. The flip side of that that I've heard is that a lot of people also may not have the ability to drive a car or the money to drive a car, but they're still being forced to pay for a parking space anyways because of minimum lot sizes. I think as a city, we don't really have a lot of room for extra cars, so we should be working towards trying to make it so that the car is less of like a requirement to live, that is like a burden on people. And then the services and the transit and everything should be designed so that the 25 to 33% of Washingtonians who can't drive can like still live here and live a full life. So if we're coming down on the balance of more versus less parking, I think, you know, the requirement to require a lot of, like a lot of off-street parking is probably not like a good one for things like accessibility. If we are, again, compensating with all the other stuff, so there's a, there's a balance there, I think. The, one thing that, to change gears a bit, one of the things that bugs me about this is that I see this number of 6,000 square feet where there really aren't any lots in our city that apply that. So when I see that number and it like doesn't align with our other stuff, I kind of question that. Most of our lots are much bigger than 6,000 square feet. And so by this guidance, we would sort of talk about a maximum of two off-street parking spaces per unit? What do we currently require?
Right now, it's two off-street parking spaces for a single family dwelling.
And then for ADUs, we require one extra, if I remember right?
It's one additional if there's no on-street parking. If there is on-street parking, then they don't have to provide that additional space.
And then for a town home, if it's less than 1,500 square feet, there's one parking space required for town home development. So again, that's current zoning. Our zoning is going to change, right? So we gotta be thinking that having an 8,400 minimum lot size is probably not going to exist, or 7,200 square foot lot size is not going to exist. The way we've done things and the way we're moving, if truly we're allowing for middle housing, we can't have the same standards and achieve the, what we would like. It's almost like Chair Batista said, what, what is the intention? And then what is the code regulations around that intention? It's really important. It was the intention for cottage housing, 2,500 square foot homes? Or in your mind, do you envision something else? But if you don't have the intention and the code around the intention, then you're not going to achieve that, right? So we gotta be thinking that way.
Yeah, so I think, you know, these numbers, you know, clearly came to us from Commerce. I think to Commissioner Harrison's point that, you know, if we are looking at equity and transportation and like what areas of the city are like already a little bit more accessible to people with different abilities, and what areas of the city might require a different standard, like I think maybe lot size isn't the way to go about it, but like other areas of the cities. So I think, you know, the, the way this is sliced is a little bit weird to our particular situation, I think. So I think we need to look a little bit more closely at this.
So right now, you know, you said currently it's two off-street parking spots for a single family home. So I'm assuming like if it's, the interior garage is considered one spot and probably the driveway would, could be considered the other spot?
Yeah, if they meet certain standards, or in some cases, a driveway could be considered two spots or the garage two spots, depending if they meet dimensional standards.
I know, you know, and, and, you know, some of our, oh, depend, depending, like even on my street, there's, you know, there are some driveways that are, that are long enough where you can get two cars plus a garage that they built so small, you can't really get a car in there when cars were boats when they, these houses were built. I keep thinking, you know, there's, there's this great town home development in Bellevue. It's just north of their downtown area, like on Bellevue Way, and I can't remember what the cross street is. It's probably, I don't know if it's 112th or maybe 114th or whatever, it's near where their post office is. Great looking townhomes, and they structured their parking. So they were, they're able to still get the open space up above, but all the parking is below. Now, I understand that that is going to raise the price point, but if in some cases that is an option, I don't think we should disallow it, but also recognize that that does, you know, it doesn't necessarily get to the affordability aspect of it, but it definitely meets our goals of making sure the parking's not on the street and making sure there's enough open space in the development for, you know, the type of green space that we're, we're desiring. So I don't know if that means, thinking of it not just as a structure, but, you know, almost having to take a communal approach to parking, similar to the discussions that we've had recently in terms of, you know, the commercial aspect of our town center and stuff, you know, more of a communal sport. And I always bring up, you know, things like the Vitamilk development site on Green Lake, where it's one development, but it's actually several buildings on a, you know, kind of podium style with shared parking underneath so you can maximize, you know, the parking for the entire development. But at, at street level and above, the sense of scale is different, and it doesn't feel that imposing because you have smaller buildings as opposed to one ginormous building that's, you know, that's taking up the whole block. So, you know, there's, there's, there's ways we can squeeze parking in, but I think the more creative you get with that, the more expensive it becomes. So it's, it's kind of this, you know, it's a, it's a give or take. I just would, I, I would hate to see that our code not allow those options, but I recognize that most developers aren't going to want to, you know, they, they, they've got their little, like, you know, they don't, they don't design by an architect, they design by an Excel spreadsheet. So they've got that sweet spot that they know it's going to pencil out with their maximum amount of profitability, given what the, the market demands are right now. And so that's what they're going to build. But if we have a developer or an individual who wants to take that extra step, I think we, that's something that we should allow. Just recognize that the odds of it happening are slim.
Yeah, I would like to add that the state has recently added some new parking standards in other initiatives, and that would give more flexibility in terms of taking into account enclosed parking versus unenclosed or tandem parking. So there are certain flexibilities that, that is in the state law these days.
Okay. And I do agree with Commissioner Breschler that this, it's, it's tough circling the square when the standard keeps saying 6,000 square feet, and that is not a, a unit of measurement that we're really using, you know, here. So it's just kind of like, well, what does that equate to this? You know, it's, it's like as bad as me asking, how many floors are you going to get?
Yeah, I think that's like, I don't know, I would not have picked lot size as the determiner for like how many parking spaces there should be. Like, I think it's more about neighborhood and proximity to transit and things like that, and how good the infrastructure is.
Well, another sort of thing that just sort of came to mind as, as you were speaking, I'm wondering if there might be pushback, just thinking to some discussions on community groups on like Facebook and social media about the concerns about when large developments go up, there's a worry that people who do have cars and they don't have a place to park them, they'll just park in the neighborhoods and they fill up. You know, if you've been to certain parts of Seattle, Capitol Hill, or, you know, the U District, you see this a lot. And this isn't me advocating one way or another, but I, I do, I would wonder if there would be frustrations from, you know, homeowners, especially homeowners in probably surrounding the area or very close to the town center. But yeah, again, that's just, that's just me. What's my thoughts?
I don't think you need to even go to Seattle for an example. We have that in the city right now. If you look at 48th by 212th, there's massive overflow parking from those apartment complexes onto the street because there's more vehicles than parking spots. Another more hidden issue that we have, and I say it's hidden because it's cross jurisdictional, that those cottage, not cottage, garden style apartments that got built just north of Albertson's or, God, Albertson's, Safeway now, that's county land. So the city had no say in that. And that's, that's area is the zoned urban center for the county. So they were allowed to put in more density with not as stringent parking requirements. The problem is, and it's really noticeable now since grocery stores aren't open 24 hours a day, if you happen to drive by there and you see 40 cars in, in Safeway's parking lot, you know they're not shopping. It's, it's, it's the apartment overflow. And I'm not exaggerating with 40. I, I shop there every week and I go at night because I'm a night owl. And I'm, every time I go there, I count how many cars there are between the, the western lot, that kind of where the Papa Murphy's pizza is and stuff, and the more central lot that's more to the east, you're looking at at least 20 in each of those lots, sometimes more, and it's all overflow from those apartments. So we, we have that problem in the city right now. We don't even have to look at Seattle.
Parking will be an issue. Let's just get that clear. Parking may be the number one on a lot of people's mind, and I think we're, we're going to have some requirements that we're going to have to address straight up. And I think ultimately, we're going to have parking enforcement in our downtown core in areas adjacent to the light rail station, and when parking will not be required. So parking's going to be an issue. Parking's an issue whether it's an issue or not. Every small town thinks parking is an issue. There's no town I have planned in where you don't have a parking problem, even when you don't have a parking problem. But we will be transitioning and parking will be a huge topic of conversation. So more to come on this.
Should we move on to the next slide? So that's pretty much a high level overview, and I think I, we've been taking a lot of notes during this past hour. And so I think next steps is we'll review the notes and see if we want to make any changes to the draft ordinance before some middle. But as much as I love discussion, I love a good survey as well. Oftentimes, I think it's great to have individual feedback and create some visual summaries showing what survey has said about each of these topics. And so coming to you all shortly after we meet our, our Friday deadline, my hope is that, my ask is that for each commissioner, fill out a survey on each of the recommendations that we'll be making in ordinance. We'll be asking staff to fill it out as well. And we'd love to present to the staff in terms of like where, where we're feeling in terms of the opportunities for ordinance and where there are points where we need to discuss further as well. And so this has been a really helpful step for me in the past, and particularly thinking about housing action plans and how housing can play in a city. And so really excited to be sharing it and excited to see what the results are. So I think this is really, everything that we've talked about today will be present in the worksheet as well. And I think you'll be, there'll be the one part saying if you're either for, neutral or against the policy recommendation and just any notes. And so it'll help us make sure that we're finding ordinance to really reflect sort of what the vision of, of not just for middle housing, but for the comp plan update as well, and supporting the city's efforts and that effort in that visioning process. And so, yeah, I think that's about everything I had for today, and we'd love to open up for any questions if I can answer.
Not so much a question, we'll have a comment, and I think it's one that we made recently too, you know? We, throughout several meetings that we've had, you know, we've kind of asked, is this coming from the state, you know, why is it the way it is? And so I think with staff and consultants' explanations over the many meetings, we keep asking this question. I think we understand that we are required to present our answers to the state in a certain format. But I think, and I've said this before, I think what it would be nice, so page one is our direct response to the, the state in the format that they want. You flip over to page two, translates it to how it actually affects us, you know, what, the numbers on page one, what does that really mean when it applies to us? And, you know, using the, the, you know, the, the code minimums and, and the, and the language that we're used to seeing, just so there's that translation so that we really get what it's going to, you know, even tonight, we're talking about, you know, the 6,000, you know, it's like, doesn't mean anything to us, you know? Just, you know, just some Rosetta Stone or something, you know, that, that makes it a little bit easier, you know, moving forward since, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to juggle a couple of things here at the same time. You know, we're trying to placate the state with kind of what I feel is their heavy-handed approach to solving an issue. But we're also trying to do it with finesse to try and make it work in, you know, in the city with, you know, our circumstances, which as Kristi mentioned earlier, in every city is a little bit different, you know, our lot size is a little bit different than in other cities. So it's an ask, I don't know if it's doable, it'd be nice if it is, but I, I think that would, that would help a lot.
I second that.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments before we move on?
I do have a next step slide real quick.
Oh, sorry.
So yeah, like Ben mentioned at the beginning, we have this grant deliverable. It's the first grant deliverable, we have two total, just part of our scope of work for the Department of Commerce grant, so that's due by Friday of this week. And then as we move forward, we'll deliver to you the policy worksheet, get your input, and then continue to work with the consultant team to plan for the next phase of this project. So right now, we don't have a, a date set for when we'll come to you again, but definitely by summer, we'll probably meet again on this and move forward with this project. Thank you.
All right. Just double check one more time. Any final thoughts, questions, comments? Not hearing or seeing anything. All right, thank you. Oh, I have some additional contacts slides in my packet. Is that something that we need to go over real quick?
That was in case we needed it, just to provide some more information.
Gotcha, okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, comprehensive plan update, Vision 2044.
All right, it's me again. So transitioning on to the Vision 2044 Comp Plan Update, today's focus is on capital facilities and utilities. So we gathered your input from the policy matrices and sort of have some high level findings of those. And then, so today's goal is just have a more in-depth conversation on your comments and see if you have any further input. And I'm joined by Rich Meredith, City Engineer. So we are still on track with our schedule, targeting a July draft EIS. That's currently in development and we're getting close. Let's see. And the draft plan, again, targeting August for Planning Commission to forward, forward a recommendation to City Council. Targeted adoption for council, we're aiming for October, mid-October, and so that is in the works. In terms of community update, community engagement update. Terms of community update, community engagement update, the major update is that tomorrow we will be having a neighborhood planning workshop, or subarea planning workshop for Melody Hill and Cascade View neighborhoods, that is at the Brighton School, just down the street on 58th in the Cascade View neighborhood. So it starts at 5:30 PM, the first section is focused on businesses and employers, second section is residents and visitors, employees, just general public. And so, again, you are not mandated to attend at any of these specific times, if you do come towards the beginning, we'll have an opportunity to engage with folks, and we'll also have handout sheets where you can provide further input outside of the scope of a focus group. So we'll have about eight focus group tables, that'll be facilitated, what else, free food, we'll have childcare provided, and yeah, any questions on this before we move forward?
Will we be signage outside, kind of telling people how to do care?
Yes, yeah, we'll have some sandwich boards, I'm sort of directing folks to the gym area. So I believe there's like two entrances, so if you park in the parking lot, we'll have signage that says to sort of walk out into the public right of way, there's a sidewalk that leads to the gym.
Are we gonna, I think we're gonna have signage up on 220th as well, are we going to?
I, I'm.
I know we have a few, so, okay, I don't want to promise anything, but I know we have a few sandwich boards that we're trying to get people to someplace that we wouldn't typically be at, so.
And there are that many entrance for the school's office?
Right, so the main focus today is discussion on capital facilities and utilities. So today we're discussing, it's our last set of elements, so after this meeting, we'll be moving towards a draft plan review, for Planning Commission review, and that'll start on July 8th. So guiding discussion questions for this section here is to review the high level findings and comments, offer you an opportunity to clarify any comments or questions, and an opportunity to provide any additional direction for staff. Real quick, proposed draft goals for utilities, so the first goal is focusing on third-party service providers and adequate services to meet community needs. Second goal is ensuring utility uses and infrastructure are compatible with land use and surrounding environment. And then third goal is coordinating with third-party service providers on timing and availability of services and projects. For capital facilities, we have five goals, so first goal is just providing the adequate public facility for public needs. Second goal is ensuring efficient and cost-effective capital facilities and systems. Third is consistency with land use environment elements. Fourth is maintaining a plan for future capital improvements with sound fiscal management. And goal five is planning for and providing effective emergency management and health and public safety services and facilities. So we're going to start first with capital facilities, and as I read through some of the Planning Commission comments, what we're calling CUDO, so some support for some of the policies, so specifically around, there was support for retaining and requiring, and acquiring new parks and open spaces, so that was one of our policies. So there's support there, there's support for meeting ADA and ICC standards for new construction, support for working with school districts, the Emmett School District to provide adequate facilities and safe routes to schools, there's support for promoting energy management, energy demand management and conservation of existing facilities, specifically before developing new ones. So in terms of support, is there any, does anyone want to add anything to this, any clarification?
I think we're good.
Moving on to the utilities element, there's support for coordinating with internet service providers to provide adequate availability of service. There was a lot of support for public internet at civic facilities, and few comments on screening of utility boxes and sort of incorporating an artistic element to that, so in order to enhance the public realm. So this was also brought up by CPAC, so it seemed like there was support with CPAC comments on this. And then utility line maintenance and impact to and from trees, so there was support for ensuring that first, we protect trees, but also maintain our utility lines by ensuring that those are, are not impacting those services. Any clarification here?
This is just kind of a high overview of, of, you know, the comments that were made, because I know when it came to like utility boxes, I had made some further comments too about, you know, vaulting, when possible, you know, if you had to choose between a pad mount and a vault, vault. So, yeah, if that, if that comment isn't lost, that's, that's kind of all I'm concerned about. Yeah, I know there was, I think I made some comments too on the public, you know, the art on the boxes and, you know, where that would be most appropriate in terms of, you know, our code, is it under utilities or is it under, you know, more like kind of a public space management type of deal that would handle art in general in the, in the space, you know, partly with utility boxes, it, it comes down to who owns that box and what do they allow? It's not, it's not always going to be the city's box, the city who has control over it, a lot of times it will be, but I, I know, I know in Seattle, you know, they're, the boxes, the signal box art, so, you know, the city controls the signal boxes, so it's, it's their boxes, they allow the art, but you know, there are other boxes that might be from other utilities that the city doesn't have necessarily a say in, so I think that's an important caveat, because we might, we might get a situation where there'd just be like, oh, that perfect box for art, and it's like, yeah, it's not ours.
Any other questions here?
Is there a section on questions where adequate availability of service is discussed, like what that means? Like are we, you know, we can get the internet to people, but like, are we subsidizing it? Are we like building terminals?
I think short of free municipal wifi, it's still up to the individual and the utility provider.
I don't know if I have the answer right now.
I know that with the Main Street project, one of the elements that we're incorporating is 5G capable streetlights, so we're looking forward, we're forward-looking in some of our design standards and our standard details, and we, you know, beyond Main Street, we should be able to expand that out further, but the service is provided by, you know, third parties. We, with part of this goal, we wanted to make sure that all of our civic facilities had the wifi in them.
All right, that makes sense.
That kind of brings up, so when you said 5G capable streetlights, you're just saying that the streetlights are capable of housing the, the 5G infrastructure?
Correct.
Okay, so again, one of these, I feel like a broken record tonight, I was around when we passed this code originally, and I remember the, when we did this, we were basically told that the utility lobbyists went straight to the feds and superseded anything that we could do at the local level, and we couldn't even have a say in what the infrastructure looked like. They, they got to provide, they got to, they get to install whatever they want to install, where they want to install it, and when I think about, especially when it comes to, you know, the town center and the specific design standards we have for our nicer streetlights, that sort of gives me pause that some ugly cheap monstrosity is going to be attached to that, kind of breaking that visual aesthetic that we were shooting for, is that still the case, or is, is there an option where we, we have the ability to say, okay, we can't say no to your 5G facility, but we can say, we can have a say in what it's going to look like?
I'll answer this, yes and no. So during the Trump administration, there were changes to the federal regulations that definitely allowed for less oversight by municipalities. We did get help in updating our code, so there's some things that we can do, so we have a telecommunications chapter in our code right now, and then there's some other things that we're limited to do, so it's not an all or nothing, there are definitely some things that we have less oversight on, but we still have oversight on different things throughout the city, so, in a nutshell, if you get bored one night, you can look at the telecommunications chapter, but.
And I know this would be obviously more of a city council decision, but when we talk about equitable access to this, I mean, really that means the city would have to be a player in this game and provide the, the service themselves, is, is that something that the city, I don't want to put words in other people's mouth, but is that something that the city would consider, is that, is that even feasible?
I think there's been some conversations around it, I think right now, like Rich was saying, when staff is interpreting what is maybe the direction, is that we're providing for these utilities as we do other improvements that they, they go hand in hand with the design that we're doing for streets and other things to make sure that we have that capacity around the city for everyone in an equitable format.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I'm not a private utilities expert, especially when it comes to internet service, but I mean, you have people who are still using their phone line, probably DSL or something, or fiber optic now, or, or cable, that's probably the, that's probably the majority of the way it's being fed to the homes themselves, except for those people who are complete cord cutters and do everything off of their cellphone, then it's probably cell service.
Yeah, I think the technology is changing so much as we, you know, we even look like you're talking about, oh my goodness, what are we going to do with the light poles for the 5G, right? And you just kind of see how fast all of that technology is transitioning. There's also programs through the companies based on income levels for providing for these services, so there are programs out there, I don't believe that that's the direction that we've been given as far as council goes right now.
Okay, but when it comes to those programs then, is that something that we can stipulate in the franchise agreement, like you, provider, need to have an option for X-level income standard?
That I do not know.
Well, not all of them have franchise agreements, some of them are choosing to let them lapse and just get permits like everybody else, so we may not have that leverage if they don't have a franchise agreement.
Gotcha. Okay, cool, thanks.
So moving on, so I'll be flip-flopping here between capital facilities and utilities, so in terms of capital facilities, or policies to strengthen or improve some of the language, where we have a policy on retaining and acquiring new parks and open space, there was an interest in, in ensuring that we are increasing the availability of parks and open space. We have a policy where we say consider climate change impacts when we're citing public facilities, so there was suggestion on developing metrics for evaluating sites for resilience to climate change. In terms of equitable access to public services and facilities, ensuring that there's anti-displacement measures in place, so looking at it through an equitable lens. Affordability of services was mentioned with specific mention of water, so water rates, let's see. Develop standards for water and energy conservation, so where we say encourage, sort of using a more actionable verb in its place. Future-proofing infrastructure to reduce impacts, and then fiscal responsibility with a suggestion for doing some life cycle planning. So any further comments or clarification there?
So I think I made several comments about future-proofing infrastructure, which is always tough to do, I wanted to get your opinion, since you're here, and I'm glad you are. So in my mind, this is like throwing some extra conduits under the street when they do a repaving, or like putting some extra like service lines or something, so that like every 20 or 30 years, they seem to invent a new kind of infrastructure, like it was cable, and then it was like wifi, and then it was fiber. How much does it actually cost the city to do that, like in, when I was a, you know, when I was an AV consultant, we'd always recommend, you know, putting some conduit in the wall, and it was a very cheap way to like, sort of plan out running some stuff. Is that also cheap for the city, or am I just costing us a bunch of money?
I use the word inexpensive, but that's exactly what we do, when the streets opened up, it, it's not very expensive to throw a couple of sticks of conduit in the ground, and with some of the developments that have happened on 56th, we, we know we were going to need more conduit when the, the Main Street project came through, and so some of those developments put in some extra conduit for us, knowing we can hook up into it later. But that's usually what we're trying to do, is put in some reserve conduits, because it's, it's easy to do it when it's opened up, and you never know what you're going to need it for in the future, so it's a, it's a pretty cost effective, cost effective investment to do it that way.
Cool, glad to hear.
I think we're good.
Okay. So moving on to utilities element, in terms of policies to improve, there was a specific comment on the role of the city in encouraging utility facilities, so in terms of what kind of sway does the city have when we're working with our third-party utility providers, emphasizing the role of utility providers in responding to outages and other emergencies. So I think there was a specific comment on when there's power outages or future emergencies, and the response to those emergencies by utility providers, and how that's gauged. So again, playing with the verbiage here, so instead of encourage, another verb to use in policy, adding the role of art in screening utility boxes, so similar to what was stated for the capital facilities element was also referenced in the utilities element, and then balancing tree protections and utility maintenance, and the role that the city can play in that effort. Anything to add here?
I'll just make a comment on the verbiage, I think that both of these sections, we've talked about it in the other elements of just some more active voice, I had a number of comments, and just I'm like, what does encourage mean? And so I think just adding some more active voice would go a long way of just clearing up some of that confusion, like, I get the intention, but it's also like, kind of vague, like, I can just encourage you to do that, but is it ever going to really happen? Yeah, that's it.
Thanks.
I also had a question, and I don't know if this is on a future slide, but I think there was, I may have read it wrong, it sounded like somebody was proposing creating new kinds of utilities maybe, like sort of district energy or hot water, or, you know, chilling stuff, which I think makes sense, if we can plan it, it like, it tends to be more efficient and sort of collectivizes some of the cost and maintenance. Did I dream that, and is that something that we would look into, looking at in the future? I think it makes sense for places like Town Center, where if we've got the civic campus... where if we've got the civic campus and we can like lease out some of our extra hot water capacity or entreat it as a campus, like, that sort of makes sense to me.
I'm not familiar with that comment. If you could point me to it, I'd be greatly appreciative.
I'm pretty sure I wrote it. Let's see, would it be in the utilities? I think it was in like the first section. I'm so glad these are all together, by the way, this is great. We waste diversion. Okay, well, I don't remember exactly where it was.
Okay.
But somewhere in the utilities section, I thought there was something about district utilities that are beyond like power and just the provision of regular water. And if we do that, I think if there's opportunities to do that, that could be good. Oh, here it is, it's under policy UT 3.1. Promote the co-location of facilities and district utilities. And then I put, and district utilities where applicable, e.g. hot water cooling, et cetera. I wasn't quite sure what they meant by co-location of utilities.
Yeah, I can sort of explain it, then I'll actually look to you. So I think where that, what that means is when you have a wireless telecommunications facility, there's different third service providers that can locate on that single monopole. So looking to leverage that kind of functioning. Anything to add?
Yeah, we've got a few locations in the city where we combine telecommunications with some of our structures, like the water tanks or some poles. The more we can use the same space for different providers, the less impact we have around some of the other areas. So it's a goal of ours to try to minimize the impacts on our residents if we can find space on some of our existing sites.
Okay, cool, so I did misinterpret that. I don't know how practical district energy or district utilities are, but I agree with that point. And if it is also practical, it could be a cool thing to investigate, but it is a bit, I feel like it would also be a bit out of the blue. But if we can do it, I feel like it might bring us some advantages.
I'll just throw out that that would be a great thing to explain in the comp plan.
Yes. We'll make sure there's a call out.
So that topic kind of circles back on, you know, what we were just discussing about, you know, the 5G nodes. You know, I remember when they came and had to explain to us what 5G was. You know, this was like 10 plus years ago. The, you know, what they said is that, you know, they're much smaller in scale, but they're more frequent. You know, it isn't like the big monopole like we're used to seeing, and you know. So as we progress, and you know, I think everything is really transitioning over to 5G, are we even going to be, I mean, do we really even have the opportunity for the shared utility locations like we do right? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is it's like, there's stuff on the water tower right now. As it transitions to 5G, is that even going to still be an option to co-locate there? Or is it, the technology doesn't even work that way anymore?
Well, you're right about the 5G, they call it small cell because it has a much more frequent infrastructure dispersion. And so when it comes to mounting something on the water tank, it's still going to have a limited range, so that would just be one point in a whole network of 5G poles. So what we're trying to do is identify poles. The ones for Main Street actually have a model that you can add the equipment above the streetlights so that it's a little bit camouflaged and blends in with the others' equipment. But when it comes to planning out the 5G networks, it's looking for a network. It's not just looking for single sites like the old 4G and 3G did.
And I know we have, you know, a goal of, you know, undergrounding the power. So does this policy kind of take account of that? How right now, we still think of locating these facilities on actual poles that may not be there in the future?
Well, that's why we're looking at 5G capable streetlights, because we're, even if we underground, we're still going to have the streetlight poles. So if there's a utility pole that we want to underground, we need to evaluate it. Is this a good spot for a streetlight and replace it with a streetlight?
Okay, so we're not going to go down the path of a moon tower?
Not today.
Okay.
Okay. So the next section here is some questions specific to staff. So we can answer some of these today and also just make sure that it's addressed in the plan itself. So in terms of clarifying, there's a suggestion to add call-out boxes for level of service standards for a city provided services and facilities. And there was a comment about energy demand management, so I think that is worth adding a call out. We'll also add a call out about co-location of facilities. So one question here was what is meant by falling below minimum standards for water and sewer services? Another question is what is meant by considering climate change, landings and other related impacts when it comes to citing of adequate public facilities? There was a question about whether the city has engaged in a study on water quality? And again, some clarification on level of service standards and where or how those are defined? What is the impact of stormwater system on the environment? How do we scale out public facilities to meet community needs? And then aligning utility upgrades and development standards to treat stormwater before it hits natural waterways? So.
Sure.
Want to take a stab at any of these?
Well, of course. Let's see, falling below minimum standards for water and sewer. I guess I interpret that to be, let's start with the water. We have standards of water that we have to meet for both flow and water quality. For water flow, there's a certain pressure and a volume that we need to stay above for firefighting requirements. So we, as part of our planning, we have a model of our city, of the water network, and that what we're going to be doing in the future is that anytime we have a large development or a high-rise, we'll have to have that development rerun the model so that we can make sure that we're going to have adequate power flow, or we will have to delay that development if we find out there's not enough fire flow until we can make upgrades to the system. Water quality, I think, is also one of the later ones. We're required by law to continually test our water quality to make sure that we're not introducing any contaminants. We're doing a study right now, checking copper and lead levels. I mean, this is pretty tightly regulated by the feds, and so as the local water purveyor, we have a responsibility to report on that and make, have plans to correct any deficiencies as we find them.
Does that cover odor as well? Because I-
Cover what?
Odor, the smell of the water. It seems to be seasonal now, it was really bad a couple of years ago. Wherever, you know, the Alderwood Water District is getting their water from, the primary source, there was like a mill foil issue. And the water just reeked, and it didn't taste that good. But in terms of all the health standards, it was potable, it was drinkable. It was within the legal guidelines, it just was nasty. And I know we can't control that, but do we have the capability to put pressure on where the water comes from? You know, our partner agencies up the stream that we're purchasing the water from? You know, I think it's Alderwood gets it from Everett, so wherever Everett's getting it from, you know, just saying, this is a serious issue and you guys need to address it?
We certainly can, you know, get some asked questions, you know, demand some better service if we need it. The source of the water, I think they have multiple sources, both from Everett and Wells and such like, and that type of source. How they treat the smell in the water, I don't know. But if there's something that's off-putting about the water supply, we would certainly raise that to our water suppliers and say, we have to do something about it. There's different ways you can treat water for odors and unpleasant impurities there. But for the drinking water standards and the potable water standards, yeah. We definitely have leverage there because of the federal requirements.
But in terms of the treatment, that's something that we're going to have to request because we were not treating the water. Basically, you know, however it comes through the master meter, and is now in Mount Lake Terrace's jurisdiction, all Terrace is concerned about is distributing it to the businesses and residences. There, we, the city doesn't have any treatment aspect to that water delivery, correct?
Correct, we do not have a water treatment plant at all.
Even though we co-own when it's going out to the sound down in Edmonds?
That's another story.
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm going to tackle the, what's the impact of the stormwater system on the environment? A lot of the stormwater regulations are governed by ecology, and then the ecology standards are, you know, getting more strict and complicated every time they do an update. But then the city has its own standards on top of that. So our standards can be more stringent than ecology, they just can't be less. We're constantly evaluating our projects as to how we comply with the ecology and the city's standards on that. And then that leads me into the last one, where we're aligning utility upgrades and development standards to treat stormwater before it hits natural waterways. Yes, we're trying to do that as much as possible. The new ecology manual has stricter standards for the type of water that need, the amount of water that needs to be treated and the type of treatment it gets. We have here in our parking lot, the regional detention facility and an injection well. So that helps us treat the water and inject it into the ground or infiltrate into the ground without going into the natural waterways. It comes in through the groundwaterways. And then for the Main Street project, that's actually one of the design details we've been trying to improve upon, how much water we're going to, surface water, that we're going to treat with the project above and beyond what I think we planned before, and try to capture even more areas that were, than the project deals with. So the city, as a city, we want to be kind of forefront and setting an example that water treatment in the area, you know, it's not that difficult to do, it just you have to plan it out. So I like to think that the city is doing all it can in both setting our standards and following our own standards when it comes to our projects.
I had a follow-up question on that. So when we're looking at things like increasing lot coverage and limiting or regulating impervious surface ratio, how does that impact the work that we have to do for that? And then are there things we should be looking at that would make your job easier in terms of pre-treating or reducing the amount of water that's coming in or anything like that in the first place?
Well, a lot of that's covered by the ecology rules. You know, the current rules basically look back 100 years and say, what did the area look like then? And they want us to be able to infiltrate or detain the water at the same levels that it was back when it was forested. Now, we've got areas that have been paved even before that, so there's not a lot we can do when they run into those situations. But ecology rules are pretty important, and, you know, they're doing a good job with their ecology rules. So we will try to incorporate as many design standards and details that address those, and, you know, that's what the developers will follow. I can't think of anything off the top of my head that, you know, we're missing yet other than, you know, as soon as we get our engineering development manual adopted, which we hope to have done in the next couple of weeks, we'll get started on the next version of it and try to pick up where we left off.
I'd say that kind of feeds right into, you know, our previous conversations tonight about open space. You know, the more open space there is, the better chance of, you know, the water not hitting the storm drain and being able to infiltrate the ground naturally.
I think that we've been pretty proactive. Laura got our street, our tree ordinance passed, and we have our tree programs. The more we can increase our tree canopy, the better we're going to treat the water. The more we can detain and infiltrate, the better our water is going to be. I think we're making a lot of steps in the right direction.
I would just add, stormwater is probably one of our better programs in the city.
All right. So on to questions for staff on utility element. For goal one, which is focused on work with third-party service providers to ensure adequate services and technologies are provided to meet community needs. So suggestion that we add other green energy options, or are we looking into alternative power sources, for example? I mentioned the utilizing the anti-displacement measure, so underserved areas, how do we define those? So right now, we look to AJ screen data to determine if we are in, if we have any underserved areas in our community. So underground utilities, where do we define what is appropriate? Are there examples of conflicts with citing facilities in critical areas? How is the city supporting investments in utility infrastructure related to carbon neutrality and/or low-carbon energy sources? What is meant by co-location, which we answered? And then are there neighborhood data sources related to power capabilities and availability of sustainable power sources? Does anyone want to sort of clarify any of their questions or add on to it?
I know I have one, maybe more comment in terms of sustainable power sources, so let's kind of jump into the last question there. I sort of added a comment in wherever section that was appropriate. You know, when we talk about sustainable and green power, you know, we primarily kind of go to solar, you know, that's something that can be installed on roofs or, you know, on a pedestal or something, you know, in someone's yard. But I can't say that I know a lot about it, I've seen a few things about it, though small, micro wind turbines might be an option in the future. You know, it's amazing how tiny these things are. And so I think my comment was, you know, using that as an example, you know, allowing the code in the city, you know, to permit other types of, you know, small-scale green power sources that can be cited, you know, on the house and, you know, to include the micro turbines. But, you know, I don't know how that technology is going to, you know, it's going to play out. I've seen a couple of news articles, you know, about it, but have I ever seen one in person on someone's house? No. But is that to say that in five years, it might be just as common? You know, the big rub you always hear about solar power is like, well, the sun's not always out, and, you know, you only have so much battery capacity. So you try and think of these redundant systems that can kind of pick up the slack when your primary source is not producing the level that you'd hope. So like I said, I don't know how prevalent it's going to become, but as long as it's small enough scale where it's effective, but it isn't intrusive, and you know, we're not talking, I'm not talking like, you know, 300- we're not talk, I'm not talking like, you know, a 300-foot turbine that you see out in the, in the middle of Eastern Washington. You know, these things are little, you know, tiny things that are just on the top of the house or on the side of the house, probably smaller in size than a chimney, you know, it's just something that's appropriate in scale that could provide additional green power capacity. But I just, you know, hope whatever, you know, however the code language is, it doesn't preclude future technologies. Um, because I know the majority of people just sort of think solar right now. And there's, you know, there's, there's more out there. But yeah, solar is the most prevalent.
Cool. Um, I think I might've had a question about the conflicts with siding utility facilities in critical areas. So I think these might be a little bit out of Mount Lake Terrace, but there are some transformer stations that are in like, what look like pretty low-lying areas. It wouldn't surprise me if they're like, you know, as we get more developed, they start becoming flood hazards or something. Um, and then the example I think I might've mentioned was, uh, the power lines going across Terrace Creek Park where all those trees are like right on there. Um, I think it would be cool to see like, uh, examples of where we've got some of these like facilities that might be in conflict. Is that something that we could put together or? I don't know if that was a question, that was more of a comment, but this is a, this is a question for clarification. So I'd be interested to hear what your thoughts are.
I would say as, and with anything in terms of land use, it's sort of a balancing act, like how do you balance protection of critical areas while also providing a, a need? Um, so, uh,
I was just going to say, we tend to, and I mean, um, there are some things that are existing and then there are provisions in the critical areas ordinance to do exactly this. We probably have some existing conflicts, um, you know, that aren't really covered unless someone alters one of those things. But, um, I definitely think it's something to be cognizant of if we're in a situation where that's, you know, causing problems definitely, right? Um, and it's taking out the power, you know, the power on the east side of towns out or, you know, those type of things. I think that's why we've tried to be sensitive to some of the existing overhead power situations, but at the same time trying to be more proactive of exactly these things, um, of where we're trying to underground, um, uh, as part of development. And the same thing for development in critical areas, you know, there, we can't engine, sorry, Rich, but we can't engineer our way out of everything. Um, you know, so it's one of those things where, hey, maybe we shouldn't be putting X in that particular area. But we didn't necessarily do that in the past, right? We just kind of gung ho. Um, so yeah, um, but we don't have anything that I'm aware of that really addresses some of that existing stuff until it actually gets touched or, you know, there's a, there's a problem with it and then we go back and try to address it if, if it's big enough.
Yeah, I think this is kind of a general com- comment on like the comp plan in general. But, um, the, whenever I see something that's like, you know, reduce this or, um, you know, avoid this, I think, well, where is it already? Should we like be getting a list of these locations where it's already a problem? We know to avoid it in the future, but like, you know, it would be nice if we had a little bit more active management and like say, okay, you know, the power lines running here are a problem or the, the utility substation in the floodplain is a problem or things like that. So that helps us like prioritize. I don't know if that exists or not, but, um, if it doesn't exist, I think it would be, I imagine it would be helpful to see. I defer to your expertise, but, um,
I think, um, I sense the frustration. Please understand that, that comp plan is for goal and policy, right? And, um, and that's what it's intended to do. It's not intended to go the next step. And the next step is where you put the staffing, you put the dollar resources, you put the actual implementation priorities together. So, you know, sometimes I know it's like jeeps it says encourage or,
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's just purely in, in, in some areas, you can't, it would be wonderful if you could do everything right now all at once. But what you're trying to do is document, hey, these are the things that need to be addressed. And then as we move to the next part, which is implementation and those other factors, then it's like, okay, of these things that we want to do within this vision and this time period, what are the things that are the priorities right now that we're going to dedicate staffing and dollars to as a community to address these things?
Right. And I think, um, the, my understanding is that the direction that this comp plan is giving is that we're then, um, you know, sometime in the next 20 years, I guess, um, but directing that like, you know, this, you know, we're taking this approach to this problem. We're not necessarily identifying everything here, but we think this is important and this is the way we should be.
These things are important to us as a community that, that we need to be considering. And, and growth management and comprehensive planning was very intentional when it came into being in the state in the 1990s because we used to have comp plans and it was like, oh, that thing that sits on the shelf and that's great. Oh, that's good, but we're going to do this thing. And now there's law that says, no, you need to have, you need to have these plans in place, these capital facilities plans, these other documents in place before you can do just whatever you come up with on a whim. So it is important that we're putting these things in here because it is intended to absolutely guide what decisions are being made by the decision makers.
Right. And in terms of, um, like, I think in the spirit of active language, um, is it then helpful when we say things like encourage or whatever? Like in my mind, we go back to like, well, we're encouraging it, but like in the past, we haven't done this. And so there might actually be problems. Do you think it's helpful then to include language in the comprehensive plan that specifies kind of a direction that we should be taking when we start addressing these things?
Um, you know, I mean, I think there's recommendations from planning commission and then you have decision makers and such. But I would say where you really feel strongly about something, then may, maybe the language could be a bit more pointed to say, you know, all these things are important to us, but these things are really, really important to us as a regulatory body to move forward for council to consider. These are really important.
Okay.
Yeah.
Think what's probably important to remember too, you know, unlike the water infrastructure, which is a city-owned asset, um, power is the snowpud. So, you know, um, the city doesn't have as much control over that. I mean, in some ways we, you know, we can dictate certain policies, but, you know, it's, it's working with snowpud. And I'm sure especially when it comes to, hey, maybe something needs to be relocated because it's causing an issue. I think snowpud would probably be able to identify if it's causing an issue before the city would. Because snowpud's going to know exactly how many times their system has failed because of its location or its, its sighting. Um, so there's kind of a, you know, there's a, you know, there's a balance between, hey, this is a critical need, you need to be relocated because it's cau- it's causing a service issue versus, hey, we'd like to have a, a power undergrounded for aesthetic reasons and, you know, future resiliency. But is it that super need right now? Who knows? I mean, my power just went out a couple of days ago because of the nasty windstorm. And I used to be able to tell people for years, oh, my power never goes out. We just, I'm just extremely fortunate, you know, where we're at and, you know, we just don't have those same issues. But as trees are getting older, as our infrastructure is getting older, we're, you know, we're starting to have these issues more frequent. Is it as bad as other places in the region? No, it's not. But if, if unaddressed, it could be.
Yeah. And I also think it's important, even though we have a lot of third-party providers, that if staff is proactive in communicating with those providers, which I think we've really tried to address in the last handful of years of working closely with the PUD and working closely with waste management, then we can prioritize some of those things that are, are important to the community versus they don't really hear from us. So they're having separate conversations when we're kind of getting their ear when development comes in or when there's an issue. So I think it's also on us to strengthen those relationships. So we're kind of walking in tandem to solve some of these problems that we have.
All right. Um, so just a couple more slides on the discussion item here. So for capital facilities, some new ideas that were brought up. Um, water conservation and developing policy related to gray water recycling, water harvesting, onsite water and waste treatment, access to clean, modern public restroom facilities. Um, so I think that comment was focused more on our parks. Incentivizing reduced water and power usage in existing buildings. So for example, um, utilizing available rebates or programs for energy efficiency that are provided by third parties, identifying types and need for emergency facilities, um, developing a full lifecycle plan for, uh, public facilities, uh, including end of life and identifying replacement costs. So just sort of doing a feasibility analysis there. And then upgrading the library facility. Would anyone like to provide any clarification or additional context?
Not clarification or context because it wasn't my comment, but it is kind of interesting. You know, the, the lifecycle plan and end of life replacement cost. I mean, any kind of study is going to be static. And as we've seen, you know, with inflation and the cost of construction and building materials, it's just skyrocketing and it's just unpredictable. Is, I mean, it, yeah, it's helpful to get an idea like, okay, if we did this in 2023, we'd have a great snapshot if we replaced this in 2023. But say, the, the, you know, the building isn't really going to be due for replacement for, you know, it's, it's got a lifecycle still, maybe another five or 10 years. So this study that we spent time on in 2023 is really out of date in five to 10 years. Um, so would this be something that would, we would want to do on a semi-annual basis as almost more of just a maintenance? I don't want to say thought exercise, but it just, you know, if we do it on a regular basis for our key infrastructures that we know in the next decade or so may need replacing, it kind of puts that, that price tag in our head or not necessarily, or probably city council's head to get it, you know, to get a better idea, hey, what are we going to need to budget this? Um, or is this thought more of, oh, this is what, we're only going to really perform this exercise when, once the building has been identified as, yeah, it needs to be replaced?
Well, I know that our facilities folks actually keep this type, this type of, uh, information and update it, uh, as much as we can. Um, Ken, Ken was our, our resource in that and he just retired. So, you know, we're trying to make sure that, uh, we, we were trying to make sure we picked his brain for everything we could and he's still around to help us with that. But, uh, I think it's really important to have, uh, a good understanding of our assets, as much detail about our assets and to try to plan ahead for, uh, lifecycle and replacement costs. That's pretty standard. Um, but, uh, knowing what that actually is going to be, you're, you're absolutely right. The way costs keep going up and new technology is, they may not even be planning for. It's a constant moving target. And so we're doing the best we can to, uh, to, uh, make our best judgment about what those costs will be and plan for it.
I know I sort of jumped towards the end of the list for my, my question. Does, uh, anybody have any other questions, follow-up? I feel I want to ask a question on the last bullet item, but I would maybe defer to our expert. I don't want to, I don't want to steal your potential thunder. So if you've got any questions regarding that, I'd, I'd love to hear them.
Well, sure. I mean, I, um, I think that was from a, a comment that I had. Um, and it just regards to the, um, uh, the library. I, as many of you know, I worked, I, I currently work for Snow Isle Libraries, but I also worked at the Mount Lake Terrace Library for almost three years, um, before my current position over at Briar. And, um, yeah, it's the aesthetic of the building. As you can tell, it's very older looking. Um, and, you know, with the new city hall and the police department, um, getting, you know, the new city hall being built and then the police department getting a sort of facelift, it kind of sticks out. Um, if, if you're familiar with the, the entryway to the building, there's that covered pagoda area with the like greenhouse cover. And I don't know if they've ever fixed the glass that was broken in there. Um, and then underneath there's like a garden area, but doesn't get any water. So it's just dead plants for the most part. It gets really muddy and nasty coming in. And this is, I mean, I won't go too far into it, but, um, have there been any discussions on potentially upgrading the library facilities? Um, is anyone aware of, has that come up at all?
Um, yes. Um, you know, I'm not involved per se in, um, the actual facility planning, but I know it's been a topic of conversation regarding the, the roof and the actual facade of the building and, um, potential improvements of the library of maybe increasing the size or going up, um, and those type of things. But, um, like I said, I haven't been actively involved in, um, that those things moving forward per se, other than, you know, there's been a little bit of improvement over there, although I know it's not, it's not a lot at, um, at this point.
I think last year they updated the sign, signage. Um, and I think they also got a paint job, um, to the exterior.
I, I would say, once again, you kind of were reading my mind. Um, I'm, I'm a big fan of libraries. Um, and I, you know, I think, I still think of libraries as being a nice quiet place with a lot of books. And I know that role is changing a little bit, but the space over there is, you know, a little confined. But I look at what Lenwood has and Lenwood's part of Snow Isle. Um, now that's an amazing, that's a lot of library they got going for them there. I know something of that scale would be hard to put in the footprint that we have over here. Um, but I, I don't think it's out of the question to think about. If we can't go out, can we go up? Can we, you know, can we provide, you know, especially since libraries are becoming, more and more uses are, are being asked of librarians and of libraries in general, um, more than just books, much to my chagrin. But, uh, you know, to, to be able to provide those spaces, um, uh, for not only these newer emerging activities, but also for just stacks in general. I mean, give me, give me more stacks, give me more books. Um, uh, it, it, you know, it, it would be, it would be nice. Um, and if, if people are having those conversations or just those thoughts, that would be great. I mean, I can, again, I've been here long enough. I can remember when the effort to have that thing built in the first place was going on. And, you know, that was, uh, that, that, that was a big to-do. Um, when I was a little kid, the library was over by, uh, um, Forest Crest Playfield, the, where there's that Asian church now. That, that used to be the library. That's where the library was when I was a little kid. And before that, that was actually a school district building. So, um, I can remember when that library was being built and it, you know, it's, it's getting a little long in the tooth and I'm sure it could, you know, it could use some major updates. And it's like, let's, you know, you know, don't, don't just do simple cosmetic things. Let's really take a look and see. Is, is there, is there justification for expanding this facility? I think the answer is yes. And then how, how do we, you know, how do we expand that? And how do we have it fit in this town center or this, um, civic campus? Um, one thing I would say since, you know, because everything's circular in our discussions tonight, you build a bigger space, you're going to have a bigger demand, you're going to have a bigger draw, you're going to have a bigger parking issue. Now granted, the parking lot is now bigger than what it used to be, but, you know, it's sort of shared spaces, you know, the, it's not just the library, it's city hall, it's, it's fire, it's, it's, it's the police department. So it's like, maybe we need to do a little bit of traffic demand management and have, have some of these agencies adjust their hours. So we're not all competing for the same space. But yeah, I know for me, that's definitely something that I, I would love to see. So hopefully that, that element can be put in somewhere wherever appropriate.
Um, where does it fit? Where does it fit? Because I know we also have these other, like, the Rec Pavilion is one I've also heard that we should be upgrading. And then there's also the senior center. I think they all have these questions about, like, what is their role in our town? And what kind of services do they provide? Like, the closest coffee shop to me is actually at the Rec Pavilion, but nobody identifies it as a coffee shop, because you have to ask someone to, like, go make you a latte. But, like, the library is a weird one, because it doesn't fit in parks. Like, it's its own thing, and it's a city facility, but it's also a parks department, or it's also the library as well. It makes sense to me to fit it in here, but like, you know, are there other areas of the comp plan where maybe we should be looking, or other, other, like, things that go downstream of the comp plan where we're looking at the library specifically? Because it does seem to me like it's one of those facilities. It's not emergency management, it's not a school district, and they own their own buildings anyway. It's not a parks facility. It's like this weird hole that doesn't quite get covered by anything else.
I would say for me, it's, it's, it's where it should be, capital facilities. But yeah, it's, you know, park is parks, and senior center is part of capital projects as well, right? Just like city hall. So it's just kind of mentioned, but there is also the other buildings which make up capital facilities.
Yeah, since it's not covered by any of the other, like, emergency management or parks things, I think it makes a lot of sense to, like, specifically call it out somewhere so that it's not missed.
Does anybody else have any questions for this slide? Not hearing or seeing any, so I think we can move on to the next page.
All right. So new ideas for utilities element, updating design standards specifically for townhomes. So in terms of waste management requirements, so dumpsters versus waste bins in a right-of-way, so addressing that. Waste diversion as part of the permitting process. I'll skip that, we already addressed lifecycle. Smart grid improvements, art for public space activation, moving towards carbon neutrality or low carbon, so setting a date for that. And I think that can be addressed as we move towards a climate action plan. And then new road projects should require conduits to be laid underground for future undergrounding needs. Any clarification or comments there?
I don't know if I'm a jerk for telling you to do what you're already doing, or if it's good that it's in the comp plan and it's like codifying what you're already doing as like something we should be doing.
I think it doesn't hurt. It's one of those things where, you know, we're directing to say, hey, these are important things that that we would like to, to have done.
Well, thank you for doing important things.
Okay, so if there's no questions, I'll move forward. The last slide here is just giving an opportunity, again, just anything that we missed, that we didn't capture fully from your comments, or any new concepts that you have after today's discussion, areas of focus.
Let me just double check in with our online commissioners, just making sure we're not accidentally overlooking. Any of you guys have got any other questions or comments?
I have nothing.
Nothing for me.
I'd just like to remind the Planning Commission, you'll see these all again put together, so this is not the last opportunity. I think it's always helpful, once everything gets put together and you guys review the plan, the draft plan, that, you know, there's still opportunities to say, hey, about certain things, so.
I have a question. When we see the draft plan, is it going to be like, I think in like a more, like a finalized version, like, is it going to have like the callouts? And I just, some of the context of like seeing how like, I'm reading this, but I'm like trying to think, like, if I was just an ordinary citizen picking this up, like, would I know what energy demand management means? And so I just want to, like, I want to see it all, like, together? Or is that what the final, the draft we're going to review is going to look like?
That's the intent. So the consultant is putting together the final draft plan now. What we have is a draft template, which has some information embedded in there, so some narrative and some of the updated goals and policies. The next meeting, I guess that takes me to the next section, actually.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing it. Like, it's going to be such a great product.
Yep. So in terms of the plan outline, so we have the introduction, which includes the community vision and community profile, and then the purpose and scoping of a comprehensive plan, and then our planning process, and summarizing our public participation and the update effort. And then we go to the second section, which is the planned element chapters. So each element chapter includes a purpose statement. So that's speaking to the suggestion for a vision statement. We wanted to call it a purpose statement only because we have an overarching vision for the comprehensive plan. And then supporting narrative, so an introduction and key context information, goals and policy language, which would include callout and definitions, and important contexts or examples of different programs or policies, for example. And then action items would be sort of like implementation measures. So you'll have an opportunity to see those action items. That's based on CPAG and Planning Commission feedback, in terms of priorities that the city should go with. And so, yeah, the, so June 24th, we'll have a break. There's no meeting. The full draft plan review begins July 8. And then we're going to give you time to sit with the document, read through it, and then come back on August 12, where we will discuss your recommendations as they're being formulated to city council. And then we'll have another, another opportunity on August 24 to finalize those recommendations to city council. So in total, we have about three meeting dates to go through a draft plan review and discuss your comments. We're going with three meetings, depending, that might be an additional meeting, but we'll see how this process goes. So, yeah. Any questions?
When do we get to see the, does the draft EIS come in? Where does it come in on this timeline?
The draft EIS is targeted for end of July at this point, or early August.
Okay, so we'll have a discussion of the review, and then the draft EIS will come in, and then we'll probably discuss a little bit more there. Yeah, I'm interested to see that.
Yeah. Yeah, once we have the draft EIS published, there'll be a public meeting to go along with that.
Yes, we'll be required to, and then also have a 30-day public comment period as well. So you guys will be seeing both documents. Like Jonathan said, depending on, you know, how it goes, we can slide in a meeting where we need to or to, so.
And then July 22, we won't have a meeting on the comp plan. I know I didn't see any other agenda items on that date, but that's TBD at this point. That's all I have.
Just one more check. Anybody have any questions, comments for staff? I think we got it all out of our system?
Good job at Spindler Road.
All right, thank you all. Yeah.
All right. So we'll move on to item number seven, Director's Report.
Due to the time, I won't belabor anything, just reminding everyone tomorrow on the subarea planning workshop. And like Jonathan said, it's not mandatory by any means, but we'll be starting over there at 5:30. So if anybody's interested, please tag along. And then concerning middle housing, just, you know, to let you know that we're at the start of what I anticipate will be a robust conversation on, on where we go from there and how we implement that. So there, I think that's going to take a lot of thought of where we start putting the pieces of the puzzle together. So to me, the fun part is the implement, you know, the, the comp plan's really important, that sets a stage. But then we get to do some fun stuff after that as well of just putting that together and how does that look? Because that's really going to frame the future of Mount Lake Terrace. So the work that you guys are going to be doing for the next several months continues to be really, really important. And there's a lot of changes from the state legislature that we have to think about. And there's a lot of changes in the community with light rail and the growth that's occurring. So it's, it's a pretty cool time to be on the Planning Commission and be here in the community. A lot of opportunity of doing some really cool things that you wouldn't necessarily normally do in a community of this size. So I'm looking forward to it, and I hope everybody's looking forward to really going through that process and thinking about it, because I think it, it should be a lot of fun, actually. So that's my two cents. And I appreciate all the thought that you guys have put in so far of going through all the goal and policy language and communicating different thoughts, because it can be pretty easy to just kind of fluff over that. But this really does set the stage. So, thank you.
I forgot to mention, on June 20, at council, there will be a recognition of the comprehensive plan advisory group efforts in this process. So there'll be a proclamation read by the mayor. So if anyone's interested in joining. And then we have our resident Planning Commission liaison, who's been participating in that effort as well. And the last CPAG meeting is June 26.
Yes, I look at places where they have, I look through this document, and I see their fingerprints all over it, and it's a lot better for it. So thank you to them. I hope they continue to participate and comment, and if they have any thoughts, it will definitely be valuable.
All right, move on to item number eight, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business?
I got one. Just as a, speaking of libraries, I just want to throw it out there, just to promote, we'll be having a Juneteenth event this upcoming Saturday, the 15th, starting at 11:00 a.m. It's in coordination with Snow Isle Libraries. It's the first Juneteenth event, to my knowledge, in, in Mount Lake Terrace. But so if you have a moment and you're able to, feel free to come by. There'll be free food, there'll be giveaways, there'll be, there's also a panel of speakers that'll be speaking and having the discussion at the library large meeting room. But, yeah, thanks.
What time does that start, Isaac?
Oh, 11:00 a.m.
Commissioner, I mean, Councilmember Woodard's going to be there, right?
Yes, he's one of the panelists.
Panelists, yeah.
I believe this is the, the first one in Mount Lake Terrace. I know we've joined with the Edmunds event the last, at least, couple of years, but it's cool that we got one here in town.
All right, anybody else? Any upcoming absences, vacations? Not hearing or seeing anything, so I guess with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.